That's my fault. I don't usually do that. All right, I will bring this February 28th, 2022 Special Board of Education meeting to order. Please roll call. Kate, here. Gabe?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
Clay?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
And Troy?
Here.
All right, please try me and the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I will need a motion in a second for the approval of agenda.
A motion, but I'd like to motion that agenda items three and four, oh, I see four and five be switched. So that we can have some explanation of the area maps before public comment.
One second.
Okay. Roll call on that. Kate, yes. Gabe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Amy? Clay?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. All right, thank you. So we will go straight to the items of discussion, the board redistricting, and I will turn it over to Sarah Frankenstein.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so you should have in front of you the map that our demographer has come up with based upon some criteria that you gave him and some other things. Before we launch into that, I do want to inform the public that the school district has been very cognizant and understanding of the requirements of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. That act requires us to look to see whether the minority population in Rapid City, our American Indian population, is sufficiently large and geographically compact enough to be able to create a majority Indian district for any of the school districts, representation areas, I'm going to call them districts. We have done our due deal. We have determined that there is not sufficient population of the American Indian electorate within the school district boundaries to create a majority Indian district. Even if there were enough, they are not all insular and in an area where you could create a ward where American Indians were the majority. So we have done what we needed to do in determining whether the Voting Rights Act applies, and here we just we do not have to and cannot create a majority Indian district. So next, we look to make sure that we comply with state statute on redistricting school representation areas or districts, as well as the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, the equal protection clause, which requires each district to be as equal as practicable. So in an endeavor to do that, we have this map before you. I'll go through and explain a few things. You should also have some zoom-ins that will allow you to look more closely at the map than just this, just the entire school district. You can't see much detail there, so feel free to look at your zoom-ins. When you look at the demographic data, so I am looking at the chart, the demographic data. If you look at the one, two, three, four, five, six column over where it says percent deviation, if you recall what we went through last time, state law requires each district to be less than 5% in deviation, meaning the number of people, and then you divide that to get your percentage, that is over or above the ideal number to have an exactly equal number of people in each district. And the U.S. Constitution, the Fourteenth Amendment, requires something a little bit different, that the most underpopulated and the most overpopulated, when you add the two percentages together, they don't hit 10% or above. So between state law and federal law, they're easy. They're harmonious in their requirements. So if you look at that percent deviation column, you can see we did a remarkably good job at making each district as equal as practicable. So you'll see nothing even goes above 1%. It's all under 1%, so everything looks great there. There were some interesting things that our demographer found as he went through. There were some areas of town that some areas of the school district that had census blocks that weren't assigned to any school district. There was an occasion or two when a census block was assigned to the Mead County School District, even though it was surrounded by a rep city area school district census blocks. So our demographer kind of cleaned all of that up. So that those folks are in fact recognized as being a part of the school district. The census data is a little bit skewed because it doesn't count those people in those blocks, but it's not enough people to make any difference, and I can go through that in more detail if you'd like, but it's just rest assured, we've solved that problem. So any questions? Or anything else that I can take from the board at this time?
Yeah, I have one question right away. Now, if, do you have the old Area 7 map in front of you? Do you have access to it?
I will in one second.
All right, I've got it. Okay, so I can see that the very top of seven got added into C5 and C4, I believe. Except for two orange blocks, or whatever they are, seven, purple on line above the road 225 State County Road 216, that I don't see included at all. So was that one of those things? So right up here. That part right there, just these two blocks. They don't look like they're in the new map at all. So is that maybe one of those things that he found wasn't part of our district?
Let me look here.
Because the map we have in front of us that he redid shows it going pretty much straight across the top, not including those two blocks. I mean, they're acreages, but.
Could those be unpopulated blocks between I-90 and Deadwood Avenue, aka County Road 260?
They could be. I don't know. So I just know that that's on that Area 7 map at the top, just those two extra blocks, but above the north of 225 State County Road. That have been obviously in Area 7, but are not included in this draft. So I guess that'd be the only thing to that I can see to check into.
Well, our demographer has some reference to reassigning unpopulated blocks between I-90 and Deadwood Avenue, also known as County Road 260.
Yeah, that would not be this area.
Okay. I couldn't tell you. I'd have to look at, have you looked at the zoom-in too?
Yeah, and we have, here, let me bring it up just to make sure. Shirley actually did a very good job of piecing them together and giving us a large map in front of us.
I have a lot of maps. I'm trying to find something helpful to look at. I don't know the answer to your question. I would have to to ask.
Yeah. It just doesn't look like it was included, so I don't know where those blocks went.
Right. No, I don't know.
Any other questions from board members?
Keep in mind, too, that I don't know how you're old, I don't know who did this. But when our demographer comes up with the new map, he is using the census blocks that were assigned to the Rapid City Area School District. So it could be just such a thing as the Census Bureau assigned two blocks here that they didn't hear, or this is a mistake, or, I mean, it could be any number of things. There's obviously problems with assigning the correct census block to the right.
Well, yeah.
So that's my best guess.
I mean, we, all we would have to do is make sure that if it is part of our district, that it gets included into, I'm assuming, C4, which still won't, if it's fairly unpopulated, which I think it is, it's not going to deviate too much on the negative 0.16% in that area. I wouldn't think by much.
Right.
But we would just need to make sure, double-check before we put this.
It, Kate?
Go ahead.
When you look on like a Google map on satellite view, it is populated. There is a decent little subdivision
Oh, okay.
right in the area that you're talking about. So I think the question is, is it in our district or Mead County district? And is that why it's not assigned? So so that will have to be clarified.
And certainly after this, up on our website, under each board member area, the map will have to be updated as well to reflect whatever this map ends up being. Any other questions? Jim, Gabe, Clay?
Go ahead, Amy.
I, I just, I mean, I didn't know if somebody's going to go over the main changes or why we made the changes. I guess Sarah kind of did. Area 7 was overpopulated, and that was our main goal. And so Area 7 has been kind of divided up into C5, C4, and C6 to balance out the population within each of the districts, so. Otherwise, there aren't any major changes.
I'm not seeing that it went into C6, but.
It did just this little bit that is the tan area up into the pink area. The C1 makes a peninsula.
Right.
And that was created because the tan area to the right or to the east of it was added from 7 to 6.
I see. Okay.
But I don't know that, it's a small populated area.
Yeah. Yeah, and C4 was underpopulated, so that really helped out that area, too.
Yeah. I would say that, yes, Sarah, this is a great map because it brings everybody into a relatively even state of population.
It also seems to square it off a little bit. I mean, obviously, over in the Mead County part, well, not Mead County, it's Pennington County, but it's Douglas School District. There's nothing we can do about that. In the Area 7, it's got like little pockets that come up and.
And this, this orange area that says RCL, that just indicates the base, and that's the name of it. What did you call it, Sarah? Population unit or something?
Yeah, the Census Bureau will designate population areas. So for instance, Rapid Valley, it's not a, not a city, but they recognize it's a population area, so they will designate certain you know, areas of the demography and it's.
This, this orange area that says RCL, that's not a new voting district on this map.
No.
Just indicating that that's where the base is.
Right.
That's not the base, that's the airport, right?
Or maybe it's the air.
Yeah, you're. Yeah, that's the airport, not the base.
Yeah, you're right.
Base is north of I-90. Any other questions for Sarah, or any other explanations that we think we should have for the public? I know that this was should have been done two years ago. None of us could have known as far as remembering eighth grade civics, when the civics tells you that the census. I mean, I don't know what grade we would have even learned that in, or who would have been able to say, hey, board, and this would have been two years ago, 2020, when the census was done. And I might add that it was Mrs. Weaver that actually brought this to our attention, otherwise it may not have gotten done about two months ago. And of course, we couldn't get to Sarah as quickly as we wanted to. She was working on a lot of other things. She's the expert, so she had at least a month there that she was busy doing city and other things, so. With the quickness that this needed to be done by today, our date is due today. I think this is fairly good. It's even, keeps all the incumbents like we asked in their area, and it really evens out all, the whole area, because I know last Wednesday, he showed us what he could do just to even out the C7 and C4, but this, this brings them all to a good even population. So I'm okay with it, with as quick as this had to be done. Any other comments? And I'm not seeing any hands, so if we're done asking, Sarah, any questions? We can go on to other. Any others from board members? Still not seeing, oh, no, that's not a hand from board member. Yes, I will go straight to number five now, which is persons wishing to address the board. Looks like we could still do a half hour, five minutes each, since we only have two, or maybe a third one up here. Florence Thompson, you want to go first? Amy, would you?
Okay, now we're agreeing to go. That's fine. Okay, my name is Florence Thompson. I represent South Dakota Citizens for, South Dakota Parents Involved in Education. I'm also a voter in the Rapid City Area School District. I was dismayed to find out that the citizens' map that was submitted was not one of the maps to be considered. There was only one map available for consideration, and I think we as voters deserve an explanation from the demographer as to why that map was not offered for consideration. If there was some flaw with it or something, I would like to know what that was. So that being said, I think there was a lot of work that went into that alternative map, and hopefully hopefully we'll get an explanation as to why that isn't here on the table tonight. So thank you for listening. Bye.
Thank you. All right, Tom Schie Weaver.
Good evening, board. I want to say that I really am a little disappointed that we don't have the comparatives. I did attend your meeting last Thursday, and there were, you know, there was a lot more information then. I think the general public needs to know what the deviations were prior to redrawing this map. I, I agree that it would have been preferable to have more than one choice. This is just, you know, throwing it out there, and what choice do we have but to give it our blessing? And I have some of these maps in my head. I can see some of the changes, but not everybody does, and you know, there are other things to consider besides the Voting Rights Act. There are socioeconomic divisions in our town. I'm glad that we are not a balkanized city. I think it's good that we, you know, don't have a situation where we have to create a minority district. I think it's good for our neighborhoods to be integrated. But again, a lot of things should have been considered in this process. I guess I started pounding this drum about November, right after the state process, because, and that was again, the state gave different choices. They voted on different options. The county, I'm not positive if they did. I know I did have some input with my county representative, and then the city offered three maps, so, and they did ultimately make a choice between those three. But just having one map, no explanation, no previous map to compare it to, I would say that it's, you know, it's kind of you know, kind of like some people like to say kissing your sister, you know, it's it's just not a satisfying experience to, to come and hopefully have some input. So, you know, with that said, I guess that our only option is this map. And I would hope that we would get the notes from the demographer, that we would get the, you know, the the differences, the things, the goals that he was given, what was, you know, other than the Voting Rights Act. There are other goals in drawing maps for voting districts. So I would hope that that would some, at some point, maybe tomorrow, be linked to the item on your agenda. I'm sure the gentleman was paid a handsome sum, and I think the people would like to know just what work actually went into this. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is, oh, wait, sorry. Sarah Gross, go ahead. I do? Okay.
You can hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome. Um, I agree with our prior two speakers that this just feels incredibly fast. I went ahead and re-watched your February 3rd meeting, and it, you know, February 4th, so three weeks, and just not very much time to look at it, and I'm really disappointed that we can't have a Native American district where, you know, we can have consistent representation, because we do have a very diverse board right now, but I know that their voice that would come from that community would be really important, and so I agree that it just feels very rushed. I'm glad there's not much changes because tomorrow is petition pickup, but and maybe you can look at this again in maybe three to five years and do so more thoughtfully, because I know Sarah said that you can do it more than every 10 years, and so I hope that you'll retake a look at it maybe in five years and really take some time to get community input, because right now, that we can't give any valuable input having the maps linked as they were on either Friday or today. I haven't really gotten a good chance to see them, and then from the technology end, anybody watching from home really has no idea what those changes are. So I thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to comment after the discussion. I appreciate that change on the agenda, and thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since there's time left, could I respond to that? I have some information she might find valuable.
If the board would like or be okay with that, I would be allowed. Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for indulging me. Yeah, Sarah brought up some, some points that I think could have been clarified again if we had had the report from the demographer. I did take notes during his presentation on Thursday, and I found it very interesting that the district as a whole that 11% of the voting adults who are, you know, eligible to vote are Native Americans, so only 11%. One board member represents 14%, so statistically, one board member would be an actual over-representation for that minority. I think that it is comforting that we have seen in our city that, that we're able to get, you know, that minorities are elected to this board. We've had a Native American representative in Area 6 and Area 7. Well, right now, we have two, and so I think that that might be a comfort to Sarah and others with that concern. So thank you for letting me bring that forward.
Sure, thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
I, I just, I just want to also offer some other comments. I think if anybody's listening, and Sarah, maybe you haven't had time yet, but listen, did we record our study session on Wednesday, February 23rd at noon? And it, there was a map shown, hopefully it'll show on the recording, that shows how integrated the minority population is across the city, and I think.
The whole district, though, really?
Yeah, across the entire district. So there, there's not a clumping or a concentration of minority population within the school district, which is why we could not make a minority voting district. And then I would agree that the process has been rushed, but as has been brought up, the statute allows us to reassess this whenever the need arises, and a couple of years after I was on the board, maybe a year, we did bring back a revised proposal to the board at that time, which took us to four voting areas and three at-large areas. So there has been some discussion amongst the public about changing this, because if we look at it, in Sioux Falls, they don't have areas. In Mead County School District, they do not have areas, their school. In Meade County School District, they do not have areas. Their school board members are voted all at-large. And so there are some other options that we could have looked at and can still look at in the future, if the public would like to bring that forward. And I think particularly, when you look at this map, the area between Douglas School District and the Rapid City School District, the two districts probably need to get together and realign our boundaries, or
Good luck on that one.
Yeah, or, or discuss the, the benefits and the cons of how close we are, and maybe even a symbiotic relationship would be better than having two separate school districts. So this did not make major changes, this current map. And so if the public would like us to have more goals, then to bring the areas into more equal distribution, because that was our main goal for the demographer, then we would have to talk about that. And I have no problem looking, reviewing this and encouraging the board to review it in three to five years, because our population growth will, our population should grow with the base expansion, and the districts will be out of alignment again. So thank you for bringing it forward and for commenting and helping us to understand that the process could be more involved versus simple. So, but I think the simple map, simple changes are what we needed to do right now for the school district.
I would agree. I think that we all feel that this was too rushed and would not do this again if we had to do this, this way. So any other comments?
Yeah, Kate, I just want to, I don't know if I need to defend the board or not, but I just want to make sure that it's clear that this process was not based on a preference by the board, but we had a time constraint, and the time constraint, and the people that we needed to work with us to get this done weren't just available, you know, 24/7. We had to work with their schedule. We had distance issues to work with, so I just want to make sure that in another setting, the board would have done more due diligence. I didn't know that there was another map option to, to even consider. But I, I think the board did the best that we could to follow the laws in the time constraints that we had.
Thank you, Troy. Oh, okay, go ahead, Sarah.
I can address a couple of the questions that I heard from the audience. So first, with regard to whether we needed to redistrict or what the current district looks like using today's new census data. So this was shown at one of our previous meetings. This was the map that I showed. So this is the previous district boundaries, but using today's data. So we had one district, District 7 overly, overdeviated by 9.59%, again, statute requires it to be less than 5. We had another one, C5, that was underpopulated, 7.75%, again, beyond what statute would allow. So we knew we couldn't keep the same map. We had to make changes. So we did consider that. That was a previous meeting. I, I was perhaps it was that which Florence Thompson just spoke about. I think that was the data that I did pass along to my demographer. And so I will explain why this map is not in contention. It cannot be adopted. Using that data, it over, underpopulated District 3 by 10.75%, that not only violates the state statute, but also the Constitution, federal constitution. C5 was overpopulated by 9.72%. So definitely not one that I would, could ever possibly recommend that you adopt, since it violates both state and federal law. With regard to revisiting this in the future, you can. The state statute allows you to redistrict later. Just know, it's the same census data issue. You don't get more census data in the middle of a decade. There are sometimes projections that are available. I, I don't recommend using projections. It's not solid. You're only required to redistrict after the US Census data releases its information. Keep also in mind that while the census is being completed in a year or two previous, it was delayed due to COVID, they told us, and so the census data didn't come out until November of last year. So that is the by far reason why because we did not even have the data to look at. So everybody's in the same boat. That's why I'm crazy busy right now, as is the demographer, because everybody is having to do this in a very short period of time. If you attended or reviewed any of our previous meetings, you can see that we very much did consider the various policy considerations that the board might be looking at. What are the most important things in their mind that we should look at? And number one was make as few changes as possible, and number two was keep incumbents in their districts without being pitted against each other. And that's, that's what this map signifies. I'm happy to take any other questions. I might be able to answer any other concerns.
I really appreciate that explanation. Thank you, Sarah. Jim, you have your hand up? You still look muted. Go ahead.
How about now?
There you go. You're good.
So I want to, Kate, I want to thank you for bringing Sarah to the, to the board and having this. It is very obvious. She's extremely competent, professional at what she does, and she is the leading expert in the state, if I'm not mistaken. Sarah, thank you so much for bringing the demographer, who is, who does many local, state, and national demographers for everybody in the nation, who he happens to have all of the tools so that he can do this quickly. Yes, is it quick? Yes, but it's pretty obvious. We don't have to drag everything out. This took care of all the questions that we had. You have state law backing you, and I greatly appreciate it. Kate, again, thank you for bringing them forward.
Welcome. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Any other comments from here? No? Okay. I need a motion and a second to adjourn. Troy, Deb. Roll call.
Madam Chair, are you adjourning before you adopt the map? You'll want to adopt the map.
Yeah, yes, because we're putting the actual vote on tomorrow night's agenda. We thought waiting the one day would be okay. That way, we have enough public input, even though there was only one map. I didn't want to rush a vote.
Okay.
Isn't it a recess, then? Would it be a recess?
No, it's not a recess. Yeah, it's two separate meetings. Yep. So I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Kate?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And Troy?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. All right, thank you for coming, everyone. As disappointing as it was. Thank you, Sarah.